Roll call, Mrs. Calanda.
Here.
Mrs. Castile.
Here.
Mrs. Feldman.
Here.
Mr. Jacob.
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman.
Here.
Dr. Sartino.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the organizational meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Four point oh, review and canvass of annual school board election results. Results of the April 5th, 2011 election showed Dee Mogerman receiving eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven votes, Bruce Major receiving seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight votes, Chris Jacob receiving eight thousand two hundred and forty-one votes, and Patricia Adair receiving seven thousand forty-two votes. Therefore, the three candidates receiving the highest total votes, Chris Jacob, Dee Mogerman, and Bruce Major, shall each serve three-year terms as Parkway Board of Education members. Five point oh, order issuance of certificate of election to successful candidates.
That's what you just signed.
That's what we just signed, so. Congratulations, Mrs. Mogerman.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacob.
Mr. Major.
And another second consecutive third-place finish for Bruce Major. I'd like to note that no wasted effort.
At least you're consistent.
That's right. Installation of newly-elected board members. The newly-elected board members will be sworn into office by the -- our administrative assistants. Is that Mrs. Calanda?
If you would come forward, please.
Seven point zero one, president. Do I have any nominations for the office of President of the Parkway Board of Education? If I might, I would like to nominate the current Vice President, Chris Jacob, as the President.
I will second that nomination, or are you done?
Nope. Are there any other nominations at this time? Okay. Can I have a motion and a second? Or I guess that was the motion, so.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Castile, seconds. All in favor? Can I have a show of hands, please?
You can vote.
You can vote. Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations. Your meeting, Mr. Jacob.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that very much. And now we'd like to proceed with the election of the Vice President of the Board of Education. Do I have any nominations for Vice President of the Board?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Beth Feldman.
Okay, Beth Feldman. Are there any other nominations? Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sartino seconds it. All in favor? Can I have a show of hands?
Aye.
It carries seven nothing. Thank you very much. And congratulations, Ms. Feldman. So.
Eight point oh.
This is for the adoption of the annual Board of Education calendar. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Major, or Mr. Jacob, I have some discussion on that. I have some concerns about some of the months when we only have one meeting, and I, to be honest with you, I have not had a chance to really study this calendar. If we accept it tonight, I assume, Ms. Calanda, that we can add meetings.
You can always call it a special meeting or an executive meeting.
Or if we do it soon, we can amend the calendar and add.
You can amend it, but I will tell you that once it's approved tonight, it's almost -- it's very difficult.
Well, I'm not suggesting we change any dates, but there are just a couple of months that I think we might need a second meeting, because we used to have two meetings almost every month.
Right.
This last year, we went down to one because of Project Parkway and our commitments to Project Parkway. I'm just concerned, there've been a couple of close calls with things, and maybe we need to consider adding a couple meetings. But if we can approve this one and then maybe add a couple, if we do it soon.
Mr. Major.
I think we've got the Board retreat in the first weekend in June.
Perfect.
Would that be a good venue for review and final amendment if needed?
Okay. I just wanted to talk back to us.
Any other discussion? Then can we have a -- can we have another motion?
We have a motion.
Can we have a motion and a second to approve the calendar as it stands right now for the Board of Education for the 2011-12 year? And we will amend it if necessary at the Board retreat in June.
So moved.
All in -- okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now it falls -- are there any opposed? Apparently not.
Definitely not on the board anymore.
One last item I'd like to take care of as we conclude this organizational meeting. We'd like to, since I've been on the Board, we've been able to serve with two wonderful Board Presidents, Dee Mogerman and Mr. Major, and I think if I can handle, or if I can just have half a candle to what they're doing, then we'll be well-served. But I'd like to make a presentation to Bruce for his year of service. And I can tell you that there's a -- but we appreciate Bruce, everything you've done in the last year. You've gone well above and beyond, so we'd like you to take that as a token of appreciation from the Board and from basically everyone in Parkway.
Thanks.
In addition, no captain should leave the helm without a stogie.
So.
I won't show that to the live broadcast, not in keeping with.
In the Navy tradition.
Current policy, but thank you, sir. Well appreciated. This concludes the organizational meeting. We will be adjourned for the next few minutes. We'll come back here.
We need a motion.
Can we have a motion?
So moved. So moved.
All right. This concludes our organizational meeting.
Yeah, we need a roll call.
Roll call, Ms. Calanda.
Show us.
All in favor? Show of hands. Thank you. Any opposed?
Then this concludes our organizational meeting. We will be adjourned until the regular session begins at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Board of Education. I think as the very first thing I'd like to say, and I speak for Ms. Mogerman and Mr. Major, that we would like to thank very deeply the voters in this district for returning us to the Board for another year, another term, rather, three years. We appreciate it deeply. We take it very seriously, and this is a great Board to work with, so we wanted to let you know that we appreciate that. We have something special tonight, too, that we'd like to -- we just had a brief meeting where we got to meet thirteen young men who were going into one of the branches of service, and we're excited to have them here tonight to recognize them. Normally, at this time, we would say the Pledge of Allegiance. We said that earlier. Tonight, as a special event, we would like to honor -- we are honored to have the Central High Marching Colts, and they will play for us the National Anthem. If you would stand with us while they play the National Anthem. Mr. Hoover, if you please.
Morning. Up.
Ms. Calanda, roll call, please.
Mr. Applebaum.
Here.
Mrs. Castile.
Here.
Mrs. Feldman.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman.
Here.
Dr. Sartino.
Here.
Mr. Jacob.
Here. Thank you. I don't know how you felt, but I felt some goosebumps and brought a little bit of tear to my eye. We're proud of our country and certainly proud of these young people who've made a wonderful decision to serve their country. We'd like to thank the Marching Colts and band directors Doug Hoover and Matt Beasley. We are recognizing tonight Parkway seniors who have volunteered to serve their country in one of the branches of the U.S. military. We're pleased to recognize seniors who have volunteered to serve their country. Some will go into the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, Marine Corps, and the Coast Guard. Some will go on active duty, and others will join the reserve components of those forces. Before I ask, or before we ask Assistant Superintendent Kershawfer to come forward and introduce our honorees tonight, I would just like to say a few thoughts. As a Army veteran of Vietnam, I want to be the first to say thank you to these young people. I want to thank you for what you've chosen to do, and thank you for what you are about to do in the service of America. From my experience, there are few things that are more challenging physically and mentally, but so deeply satisfying than that of serving in your country's services in the military. To those of you who are joining the enlisted ranks, I salute you. I was a sergeant when I finished my tour of duty. You are the backbone of the military. To those of you who will train to become commissioned officers, I thank you for your leadership and remind you to take care of those good non-commissioned officers, and never hesitate to seek their advice. Often, they are the ones who are seasoned professionals and have the questions that you often seek. To you parents, we say to you, thank you for supporting the decision of your child. I know you will continue to support them in the weeks and months ahead. They will certainly need it. Regardless of how mature they seem to be, they always appreciate your love and patience and the understanding that only a parent can provide. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Desi Kershawfer, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools, to come to the podium to recognize our military graduates. Mr. Kershawfer.
I usually carry one around, but. Thank you, President Jacob, and thank you for your service in the United States Army as well, and Mr. Major, to your service for our country, and to Dr. Centi for your service in the Navy, and to all the others who've contributed to our democracy. We are grateful to all of your service. Before I call our students forward, I'd like to echo Mr. Jacob's remarks. This is the time of the year when we celebrate, or we begin to celebrate, the accomplishments of our graduates, and we look forward to their next chapter in life. While many students are making plans to go to college or enter the workforce, some, like those here tonight, are getting ready for boot camp or other similar training as they embark on their career in the military. Some will serve for only a few years, while others will serve for twenty or maybe thirty years. I've witnessed many students join the military over the years, and you just never know where their path may lead. Some will find their true calling in military service, and others will decide to pursue different interests. But each of you will be glad you served, and you will grow from the experience. And I know that all of us in this room are extremely proud of you and grateful for the service you are about to give our country. As I call your name, please come forward to be recognized by the Board of Education. Each student will receive a pocket Constitution and Declaration of Independence signed by Superintendent Centi and Bruce Major. Each honoree has already received a certificate signed by Dr. Centi and Board President Chris Jacob. I would like to begin by calling from Central High, Jacob Deering. Jacob, would you come on down? Jacob will be joining the Army on active duty at Fort Benning this August in infantry and recon. Congratulations, Jacob. We're proud of you. Next, from Central High, Christopher Williams. Chris, will you come on down? Christopher will be joining the Marines actively at Camp Pendleton in August in avionics. Congratulations, Christopher. Thank you. Next, from North High, I'd like to call down Joseph De Clu. Joseph. Joseph will be enlisting in the Navy as active as an EMT or firefighter. Thank you, Joseph. From South High, please welcome Ryan Fall Duty. Ryan, could you come on down, please? Ryan will be active duty in Air Force, and he will be enlisting in August. Thank you, Ryan. And finally, from West High, Larry Toomey. Larry, could you come on down? Larry will be joining the U.S. Army at West Point this July. Congratulations, Larry, and thank you. Mr. Hoover, we're going to call you back around at this time. I would like to ask the Marching Colts to play a medley of military songs, and before we do so, there may be other employees or visitors here tonight who have also served in the military, and I would ask that any of you who are here this evening to please stand and let us honor you along with our new recruits. Thank you all.
Men, horse up! The Army.
Thank you very much. I just want Larry to know that when I went through basic training, one of the exercises was to defend yourself with pugil sticks. That's like a big Q-tip, and I had to go against a guy the size of Larry. He had a better reach than I did, and I spent a lot of time on the ground. We thank you, these outstanding students, and to the band who played such a rousing rendition of each one of these things, the honorary songs of each service. It was wonderful. We thank your families, the principals, for joining us here tonight. Thank all of the other military veterans who might have been here tonight. It's been an honor to do this and to be with you. At this time, we will take a brief break of a few minutes, and we'll resume the Board meeting shortly after. Thank you again. I'd like to finish up with special recognitions. We have with us tonight our new superintendent, who's in the district again. He's really getting acquainted with us. We'd like to recognize Dr. Keith Marty, who's here. If he would please stand up. He's getting to the point where he doesn't need his GPS to find things now, so. Thank you, Dr. Marty, for being here. Four point oh, additions, corrections, modifications to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections that we need to make?
Yes. We'll be adding the personnel section when we come to the consent items.
Okay. Thank you. Five dot oh, citizen statements. We have a few here. I'd like to call your name, and you can come up. We'd like you to say your name and where you live, and we limit you to three minutes. And the Vice President will be giving the high sign if you get close to that, so that you'll know to wrap up. The first one on our list tonight, excuse me if I don't get these names exactly right, Mead Groover. Is there a Miss Groover here? Living at 302 Wildbrier Drive? Okay. We'll move on to the second one. Julie Strewer.
Hi, it's Julie Stoyer, but it's hard to look at and say at the same time. I know it doesn't look like it. And I am, my home school would be Mason Ridge and then Parkway West for middle and high school. And I just want to say how thankful I am for the Mosaics Academy, for my daughter Mary, and all the benefits that she's received. She had a wonderful school, Mason Ridge, and wonderful teachers, but she would just kind of zone out and put her head down and shut down there. She just really wasn't getting what she needed, and we are just amazed. She is like a new child at Mosaics. And it is because she's doing so well in the program that I'm really wanting every child to be able to benefit from any special curriculum they need, whether it's Mosaics, whether it's Fern Ridge, any special program that they need. I really feel like we need to get them there, so if they get the transportation that they would need, then they can attend the place where they need to attend. And I know that special assignment busing may or may not be available next year, so I just want to strongly urge you to keep the transportation in place for every child so they can participate in the programs that they need. Certainly, this is expensive, and I know a lot of other districts are cutting practically everything, but the programs won't remain strong if the kids can't get there. I don't have a crystal ball or the answers, but maybe some enrichment or extracurriculars could be cut, or maybe we could work together to find a solution that will satisfy everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I've got my written statement. I may have spelled busing wrong. Forgive me. wrong. Forgive me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you'll receive a response in writing. Next, we have Julie Kim, and if you would state your name and your address, so we can be sure that we have it right. All right. No Julie Kim? We must be out of Julies tonight, then. Prakash, and I'm not quite sure how to say the last name, but Namaste.
I think all I'll have to say is if you find my name difficult, it's not even my full name.
There's a Srini Vash or a Ram in there somewhere.
Jokes apart, my name is Prakash Ayengar. I want to express my sincere appreciation and thank you to the board for supporting gifted education in the district. We have the benefit of our son, Rahul, who goes to the Mosaics Academy. I'm just reminded of something my father used to say many years ago. He used to say, "Aim for the stars, for even if you fall, you'll fall on the moon." So I think it was set in the spirit of standards and setting high standards and pursuing loftier goals. And nothing better than really gifted education, because it really gives an opportunity to set a standard and inspire other kids also to raise the bar. And if you ask me, I think in the coming 25 years, the single biggest thing that's going to determine how far we as a country are going to be able to renew our leadership in a global economy will be educational standards. And gifted education is one important contributor to that. As far as the mundane issues around transportation and the rest of it, as a parent, all I wish to say is that I think we are greatly appreciative of the resources that the board is allocating for education and gifted education, and we are very keen to work together to find something that is financially meaningful and practical for families. So on that note, let me again say, "Thank you."
Thank you, and you will receive a response in writing. Next, we have, in the tradition of the Irish, the O'Grady clan, Laura, Josh, and Hannah.
Hello, I'm Laura O'Grady. We live in the Riverbend community, but my children are currently attending Mosaics Academy. They have also prepared their own individual statements after mine. I'd like to start by thanking the Parkway Board of Education for helping to make a positive difference in the lives of my two children. Both of my children attend the Mosaics Academy and are flourishing in a way that they never had in the regular classroom. I think that my son's experience in particular illustrates how your support of the Mosaics Academy has changed his life. My son is a kid who loves to learn. He reads, explores new ideas, and creates things. He's a kid who's excited. He can go to a chemistry class while we're at Disney World. I always assumed that Josh is a kid who would thrive in school, but by second grade, we were starting to have problems. He no longer enjoyed going to school, and he told me that he thought he wasn't smart. I was growing increasingly frustrated when I saw that my gifted reader was restricted in the classroom to books at his grade level, when he had been reading several years above grade level for a long time. When my son was helping his father build robots and create things in the workshop, he just showed an intuitive understanding of working with fractions, decimals, proportions, and in the regular classroom, he could not explore these math concepts that he was capable of mastering. Even by second grade, I could see that Josh was losing his motivation to succeed at school. His teachers did not know how to recognize his talents, and he was becoming less engaged. I was worried that he was at high risk for underperforming and not reaching his potential, but Josh's outlook has completely turned around now that he's in Mosaics Academy. He's in his third year there, and he's still enthusiastic about school every day. His talents are recognized and encouraged. He has friends who share his interests and value his ideas. Thank you for supporting the Mosaics Academy. It is not an exaggeration to say that you have changed my children's lives. I hope you will continue to provide full support for this important and necessary program, and please do not ship away this program by eliminating transportation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You will receive a response in writing. Thank you. And our final citizen...
Oh, we still have...
Oh, good. Is this Hannah? Thank you.
I'm Hannah O'Grady. When I was at my old school in kindergarten, I got everything that people were talking about and knew what to do, but we kept on talking about it. So half of the day, teachers used to take me aside and special reading class with me to do more advanced reading, and I looked forward to that each day. I really loved it and thought that's what I need, and that's what's right for me. All of the other quizzes were at the right pace for them. If they didn't understand the topic, they kept working, but I grasped it much quicker than everyone else. And I was just bored most of the time. This was wasting valuable learning time for me. You have already made programs for the kids who learn slowly, but there wasn't anything for me. In first grade, we were learning how to use multiplication charts, which is a skill I value, but we worked on it for weeks, when I got it in about the first 10 minutes. I didn't feel that I was meeting my full potential. Once a week, Mosaics was just not working. It wasn't really enough time to meet my learning needs. When I was accepted into Mosaics Academy, I was ecstatic, because we did the regular grade level pre-test, we went over what we needed to, but then we went deep into the topics. We didn't spend too much time on one subject, because we grasped it. We were able to meet our full learning potentials. I also really love Mosaics, because the teachers understand what we feel and what we are going through as learners. They really know us and help each of us personally. If we don't have buses, a lot of us couldn't get this amazing chance. We would not reach our full potentials. We would end up despising school and thinking it was a waste, because we would already know what the teachers were teaching us. Just like you keep programs for kids who learn slowly, keep the programs for us. Please keep our funding. It really means a lot to us.
Thank you, Hannah.
First of all, I would like to thank you for starting the Mosaics Academy program. It has provided many new learning opportunities for me, because I was bored in my old class. My teachers kept on explaining the same things over and over when I grasped them in the first 10 minutes. I felt like all the other kids were working at a pace that was good for them, but I needed something different. I felt like I was not learning as much as I could. That all changed when I came to the Mosaics Academy. I like how it can work at my own pace, and I can do higher-level things in my grade. We can do more hands-on learning, like experiments in science. I love that I can be more independent, and I can come up with my own experiments, not just the teacher giving us instructions and us getting in trouble if we do not follow them. We were allowed to be creative. During my first year in the academy, I went across the hall to Mrs. Brondard's class for math. We were learning fourth, fifth, sixth, and even seventh grade concepts in third grade. We moved quickly, and I knew that we were doing things more advanced. I actually had to pay attention to the teacher. Then I felt proud of myself, something I hadn't felt at my old school. Getting to school is a big issue, because both of my parents work and need to get to work early in the morning. The buses are a big help. Without bus transportation, I may not be able to attend the academy and have my learning needs met. Please do not cut funding for transportation.
We thank the O'Grady family, and you will receive a response in writing. Our final citizen statement tonight is from, I hope I got this right, Benito Parwar. Is that correct?
Benita?
Benita.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I definitely want to take this as an opportunity to thank all the people here, and especially all the teachers who are not even here, but have really contributed a whole lot in my child's last year at Mosaics Academy. She had been at elementary school at Bella Reve for the last five years before she moved on to the Mosaics Academy, where she got accepted in the middle school program. After what the kids, Julie, Laura, Prakash, have already stated to all of you, I don't really have anything new to add on. I really share their sentiments and the feeling, and I'm really glad that our kids are attending this such a great program, where teachers have really made them understand and learn what their potential is, and that they can really work in that fashion and that manner where they really can advance further. I do want to say one thing, though. I have three kids. They all go to different schools. Both of us work, and if the transportation is not there, I only... I don't know how it's going to work. I think we'll be going back to the same school, and I don't think we'll be able to manage the transportation when we all have to be at different times, early in the morning, to be reaching our places, and I think it'll not work out. I really request that you please consider what everybody has stated here without taking much time. I would really like to say that consider what everybody has been saying so far. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Benita, and you will receive a response in writing.
President Jacob, if you would allow me to break protocol, as mission compels me, we had a late arrival for our military honorees, and...
Absolutely.
We have an excellent student from South High. Lawrence, if you could come down here and join me and be recognized by the board. Lawrence Scott is from South High, and congratulations, Lawrence. And Lawrence will be attending West Point Military Academy starting this summer, so congratulations, Lawrence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just hope, Lawrence, that Army can beat Navy. 6.0, call for a closed session, none. 7.0, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the April 13, 2011 board meeting? All in favor?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. It passed at 7.0. 8.0, resolutions. We have the following resolutions that we'd like to make you aware of. Public School Volunteer Week, April 19 through the 24th. Administrative Professionals Week, April 19 through the 24th, with April 21 being the day. Holocaust Remembrance Day, May 1. National Physical Education and Sports Week, May 1 through May 7. National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 3 through the 9, and the special day being May 5. May I have a motion and a second for these recommendations, for these resolutions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries unanimously. Under communications now, we have several items that we, some of you have been waiting for, and we're pleased to move forward with this. 9.01, PACC D's Parkway Partners Award. If I could call on Vicki Manning, please, to come to the podium.
Hello, my name is Vicki Manning, and I am president of PACC D, Parents Advisory Council for Children with Disabilities. We're here tonight to present the Parkway Partners Award. This award is given to promote cooperation between Parkway and Special School District staff. Each winning team is made up of staff from both districts. Nominations were written by the parents, who feel that they have exceptional staff working with their children. This year, we chose five winning teams. They were selected by the PACC D Steering Committee. Each team is given $200 to spend on educational materials. Here to read a summary of their nominations are the parents. If the people from North High and Jane Thall could come forward.
This exceptional team has worked together to create an opportunity for a special needs student to fully participate in team sports at the high school level by being a student manager. The student attended freshman football camp and practices, and began developing friendships, confidence, and a purpose to each day. The players liked him and appreciated everything that he did for the team. When football ended, the coaches suggested continuing with basketball, and after that season, the student himself approached the baseball team to offer his services, showing great initiative and true independence and advocating for himself. And my team is Christopher Preston, Special School District teacher, and Bob Button, Parkway teacher and coach.
From West High, the parents couldn't be here tonight, so the nomination will be read by Peggy Welker from PACC D Steering.
Hi, my name is Peggy Welker, and I would like to read the sentiments of the parents Teresa and Lee, who nominated the Parkway West High School staff members Laura Niemeyer, Special School District Case Manager, and Annie Wayland, the World History teacher. This is how they describe their experience this year. This exceptional team communicates well and continuously. They are easy to work with and make the education process seamless for children with multiple learning issues. Laura Niemeyer called the hospital on the weekend, emailed up to three times a day, giving updates on how things were going at school, wrote class notes, and ate lunch with the student to relieve the anxiety of returning to school after a hospitalization. Annie Wayland gave of her personal time before school to quiz the student on her note cards. She allowed the student to text her or to call her on weekends to get help with homework, and made arrangements to get us assignments and study guides early. This attention detail has helped this student's success.
The team from Central Middle and Jocelyn Morella could come up?
This team consists of Carol Anna, Amy Harness, Kathleen Kunder, Ms. Karina Washington, Mitzi Booth, and Luisa Greenlaw. These team members have been so supportive throughout the entire process of my daughter's having a major surgery and all the issues that accompany it. The team even helped us determine the date that would minimize the time that she missed out of school, while it simultaneously ensured that she gets an opportunity to heal fully. They took the time to open up a calendar. We had a meeting, and they, you know, they did it all. So they have shown tremendous team spirit. It was very moving to see the number of emails, notes, and greetings and visits that she received during the recovery period. And they also encouraged all her friends at school to send her some emails and write notes. We used to get these notes in the mail, and it was really moving to see all that. They are a great group of teachers, and they have demonstrated how willingness and team spirit can make inclusion really work. So I truly appreciate all of the things that you've done. Thank you.
The team from McAlvy, Meg Marion? Can you hear it? Let me introduce you. Our son has decided he would like to do this this evening. We're here. My name is Meg Marion, and this is Cade Marion and Doug Marion. We are honoring our teachers at McAlvy. Do you want to tell them the names?
Ms. Keeper, Ms. Conley, and the two Bridgette and Anne, and then this, and Sue, and Tracy.
He's taking much honors here by going first name. What we want to share is that this has been an exceptional team. They have been supportive, informative, participatory, and completely invested in Cade's success. They've tapped
They've tapped into all of his learning styles, and they focused on his strengths and established just in a wonderful learning environment for him. They've kept us informed and respected and sought out our input when necessary. And they've stepped up in every single way to help him achieve his very, very best. They've learned and appreciated his humor, which is always a motivator for Cade. They've participated in his world of dogs, sports, and travel, and have fostered a number of friendships with his peers. So they have fully included him in the main body of the curriculum and with his class and has done, they've done a great job. Or he's done a great job, excuse me, due to the support of this incredible team. So we thank them from the bottom of our hearts. He's just done a great job. So, thank you.
My name is Victoria Portal, and this is my daughter Josie Portal. And I nominated Josie's team at the Parkway Early Childhood Center. The team includes Sharon George, her Early Childhood Special Ed teacher; Cheryl Waldrop, her Early Childhood Special Ed nurse; Chris Gardner, the Early Childhood Special Ed Area Coordinator; Pat Johnston, her Early Childhood Special Ed Teacher Assistant; Andrea DePrimo Kirchner, I can't remember her married name; Josie's physical therapist; Melanie Schaffert, Josie's occupational therapist; Jean Manning, the Director of Early Childhood; Sarah Dawson, a Preschool Teacher Assistant; Kathy Mjulraff, Special Services Coordinator; and Kim Sonderman, the General Education Teacher in Josie's Preschool Room. This exceptional team worked together to ensure a safe, latex-free environment for Josie, because she has a potentially severe allergy to latex. There were countless hours spent preparing a latex-free classroom, and a binder of reference material about latex products was created. A variety of latex-free balls and other latex-free toys were purchased for the classroom and the playroom and the gym. At the start of the school year, the staff were educated on latex allergies and items with latex. Letters were sent home asking parents to refrain from bringing items that may contain latex and give examples of items, because there are so many items that you would not think that contain latex, such as silly bands. Every effort was made, and a successful school year followed. This is just a summary of everything that this team did to make this a safe environment for Josie. Thank you.
Vicki, thank you very much for those awards and presentations. We like to think of Parkway as a family, and we're certainly a better family and a stronger family because of all the children that are part of our Parkway family. We appreciate it very much. Thank you again. 9.02, Calendar of Meetings. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, May 4th, 2011, here at Central Middle School, starting at 7:30 PM. 9.03, Liaison Reports. Are there any board members that would like to, maybe we can start with Mr. Major?
Just wanted to report a solid eighth-place finish in the Parkway Alumni Association Trivia Contest by the board table.
We're moving up.
We are.
It wasn't eight out of eight.
We were firmly in the upper half.
That makes me happy.
But many thanks to the Alumni Association and all they do, and I'm still negotiating to get my Liberty Card for the golf tournament, so.
Thank you. Ms. Mortimer?
I would like to report, I attended a cooperating school district's meeting, Board Meeting. I don't remember the date, it was last month. But at the meeting, they passed out information. Parkway actually has an investment in CSD, and I don't know if we fully realize about that. And if CSD closed today, Parkway has equity in the amount of 1.123 million dollars, and that's the amount of the check we'd get back if they would close their door. So while, while we know it's an expenditure for the district, it's actually something we're, you know, we have equity in. So I just thought I would share that, because I didn't have any idea it was that much, so.
Thank you. Mr. Applebaum?
Well, yeah, actually, I was just recently by Parkway North, and the new turf is coming along just fine. It's all tore up right now. And we also got a chance to tour Parkway North, and want to thank Dr. Mark Ward for that. And they say when you go back to school, it seems smaller. It really seemed like there's just more stuff in the school this time, back from when I was going to school there, so.
More walls?
More walls, yeah. And it seemed like there were more students, too.
Thank you.
Do you want to be the last? Anything else?
Sam? I just had one thing. We were able to attend the All District Orchestra Concert, I think it was March 15th. Dr. Marty was here with us, too, and, boy, that was sensational. You had the elementary and the middle school and the high school, and they were all good. And you certainly had to feel good about those elementary kids. They sat there the longest without performing and were just, showed great decor and great respect for the other people participating. It was really a wonderful night, and you felt that there, and I know many board members have been to those in the past, and I've heard them say how wonderful they are. It was my first experience, and it was really a very, very good orchestra. Those high school kids are sensational. And I had a neat experience, there was just two rows in front of me. On the first row was this young boy who's probably part of PACC D, Down Syndrome, and I wanted to make sure that I said hi to him before I left and told him what a perfect gentleman he had been, watching this hour of people playing symphonies. And, boy, it was moving. He gave me a nice hug and made me feel good, but he enjoyed it, too. So that was, that was a lot of fun. Helen, do you have anything?
As some of you know, I haven't been here for a couple months, and I'm going to get I just want to make a public service announcement and a thank you to the Parkway community for their calls and their emails. And I want to thank Kathy Wallace for her note. Thank you very much. Bonnie, thank you very much. I thank my colleagues on the board for their support and words of encouragement, and I'm so glad that we are still intact after the election. I was pleased to also take part in the selection of Dr. Keith Marty as our next superintendent, and I'm confident that he will continue Parkway's mission of ensuring that all students are capable, curious, and competent learners who understand and respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world. I also want to let Kathy know, as part of the nurses' team, that one of my caregivers was, is, a Parkway mom. So Denise, wherever you are, thank you very much. Just briefly, what had happened, it took five months to discover that there was a tumor on my spinal cord, and they had to go in and break the bones, go in and take the tumor off the nerves. One of the nerves, they couldn't do too much with, so they cut it. So now I have a dangling nerve, so if anybody wants to say anything about it, I can say, "Don't get on my last nerve." It, the tumor is called a meningioma. If there's any nurses or doctors out there, you'll know what that is. It could be potentially fatal, and I'm just grateful to everyone for, again, for their words of encouragement, and it's a slow recovery, but I'm getting there. And one final thing, which they didn't tell me prior to the surgery, was that I was bolted to a frame, face down. My head was bolted, my arms, my legs. And if anyone out there has any doubts that there's a Bride of Frankenstein, you're looking at her. Thank you again, all of you, and especially my colleagues on the board.
Thank you, Helen. We're certainly glad that Helen is back with us and witnessed her humor. She's on the mend, it's a process, and we're glad that she's able to be here with us. Thank you. Any other liaison reports, are we? No? Okay. 10.0, Action Consent Items. There's a number here from 1 to 30. Do you need to add 10.31, which will be Personnel Matters? Okay. We'll add 10.31, Personnel Matters. And I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the action items.
So moved.
Are there any questions or items that should be pulled to action? All right, then if I can ask, all in favor of approving these action items?
Aye.
Consent items?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes 7.0. Thank you. 11.0, Action Items Individual, there are none. 12.0, Reports. We have 12.01, Evaluation Elementary Communication Arts. We'll call on Lisa Meredith, if she could come forward and help us understand the 300-page report. I stand corrected.
Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Feldman, Dr. Senti, Ms. Calanda, and members of the Board of Education. We are also pleased to have Dr. Marty with us this evening to learn about the current reality of the Elementary Communication Arts Program. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you the key findings and recommendations of the Elementary Communication Arts Committee. This program evaluation has been a year-long endeavor that has involved many stakeholders. A special thanks is extended to the Elementary Communication Arts Committee, the literacy coaches, as well as the many teachers, administrators, students, and parents who completed the survey, as well as our support staff who helped us put together the 300-and-some-page notebook. In addition, a very special thank you to Dr. Nathan Tyson for his professional collaboration. Communication Arts is the foundation of learning and includes the areas of reading, writing, listening and speaking, and information and communication technology literacy. The last program evaluation for Elementary Communication Arts was conducted in 2001, with the curriculum framework presented to the Board of Education in May of 2006. Since May of 2006, the teachers have worked to design over 85 units of study for reading and writing, as well as a word study continuum. In addition, teachers have created Common Assessments for 2nd through 5th grade. Another large piece of work was the Reading Intervention Think Tank. Beginning this year, the Reading Intervention Specialist implemented a revised intervention menu, which was developed over the past two years by a group of teachers and administrators who served on the Think Tank. The new menu is designed to select interventions based on specific student needs and includes monthly progress monitoring. The evaluation process has included groups of teachers developing survey questions, analyzing achievement data, and analyzing survey data. This was followed by the intense work of synthesizing all of the information. In addition, you will remember that as part of the process, we had a planning session with you in December. Within the Elementary Communication Arts Department, there are several components that all work toward increasing student achievement. We have the Guaranteed Curriculum and Assessments. This is the Intended Curriculum, and it impacts student learning. In addition, we have our wonderful teachers in the classroom who teach the curriculum. This is the Taught Curriculum, which impacts student learning. We also have a team of Reading Intervention Specialists who serve students who are not reading on grade level. And finally, we have a literacy coach model, who has, which has an indirect impact on student achievement through supporting the teachers with professional development, as well as supporting the development and design of our curriculum and assessments. You will hear about each of these components in this presentation. The research question that guided the program evaluation was, "To what extent does the Elementary Communication Arts curriculum and programs ensure achievement of the Parkway mission?" You each received a copy of the program evaluation, and as you are well aware, it is a large document. As a result, this presentation will only include highlights of some of the key findings, as well as 14 recommendations that will make certain, we can say, "Mission accomplished." We will begin by looking at data related to the core program, the Guaranteed Communication Arts Curriculum. When evaluating the Missouri Assessment Program data, we observe that Parkway students consistently perform above the state of Missouri average, as well as the average of St. Louis County schools. In most cases, Parkway is improving at a faster rate, as indicated by the red line in the graphs. However, we must notice that our 3rd grade consistently has fewer students who achieve proficient or advanced compared to 4th and 5th grade. Data does indicate that students make, that students make progress as they spend more time in Parkway classrooms. These charts indicate that the cohort of children who make up the classes of 2015 through 2018 had a larger number of students achieving proficient and advanced each consecutive year. Specifically noticed, the increase in 2010 for the class of 2017 and the class of 2018. We increased the percentage of students in both advanced and proficient categories. So a summary of the key findings related to the MAP data include that the percentage of Parkway students achieving proficient or advanced on the Elementary Communication Arts MAP assessment is consistently higher than the average of the state in St. Louis County. The percentages of students scoring advanced and proficient in 4th and 5th grade increases as students spend more time in Parkway. And since 2008, which is the first year we had units of study for all, available to all teachers, Communication Arts MAP scores have increased by 10% in 3rd grade, 13% in 4th grade, and 8% in 5th grade. It is difficult at this time for us to evaluate the effectiveness of our primary program because of the lack of qualitative data. You'll hear more about that in our recommendations. As mentioned earlier, a portion of the program evaluation included collecting survey data. As indicated in this chart, the strong majority of teachers, administrators, and families reported they would give the Elementary Communication Arts Program an A or a B, as indicated by the green portion on each of these bars. With that said, the survey participants rated the reading program slightly higher than the writing program. The green section indicates the program was viewed as excellent, and the pink portion indicates that the program was perceived to be good. So we see here for the reading program that 74%, 66%, or 76% of the different groups reported that it was excellent or good. And here for the writing, we see the numbers are a little bit lower, 62%, 74%, and 68%. Although our current curriculum was not designed to align with our newly adopted mission, it was important for us to collect data against our mission and vision to inform needed revisions. The survey results indicated varying opinions related to alignment. The survey presented participants with mission and vision statements. The survey asked them to indicate if the current curriculum achieved each statement. The scale ranged from 1 to 5, with 1 indicating strongly disagree and 5 indicating strongly agree. This is the teacher survey results, and it indicates that 5 of the statements have had an average ranking of lower than 3.5. These include: to be a critical consumer of information; to pursue personal direction based on understanding of their talents and interests; to respond to the challenges of an ever-changing world; to solve problems creatively; and to act out of a strong sense of personal civic and social responsibility. In December, you specifically requested information related to spelling. The survey data indicated that teachers and parents both have a concern with usage of standard English. In this chart, you see 63% of families do not have negative opinions regarding their child's instruction related to spelling. The MAP achievement data was disaggregated by content standards. Standard 1 is reading and writing standard English. This portion of the MAP assessment includes multiple choice questions related to punctuation, spelling, and grammar. This chart indicates that in 3rd and 4th grade, students have displayed a steady increase in performance, with scoring nearly 70% of the points earned in 2006 and increasing to near 80% of the points earned in 2010. 5th grade students have had a steady increase until last year, when there was a dip in performance. However, when we disaggregate the data down an additional level, we look at the questions that specifically assess the knowledge of spelling. It is important to realize that each grade level has three multiple-choice questions about spelling each year. It is of concern to evaluate transfer of spelling based on three multiple-choice questions. However, this data is certainly a concern. As a result of the data I just shared with you, and concerns that we heard from teachers and parents in the fall of 2009, we took a look at the current practices with spelling instruction. A group of teachers evaluated the current reality of Word Study instruction. This included a review of the Board-approved curriculum framework from May of 2006. We learned there was inconsistent content taught related to Word Study. As a result, a team of teachers worked to develop a Word Study Continuum in order to bring clarity to instructional expectations. This was not a change in the approach to teaching spelling. It was designed to provide clarity of standards and expectations for students. The Word Study Continuum is based on these seven beliefs: that Word Study instruction is integrated into the context of the student's own writing and reading, and provides a working knowledge of the principles and patterns of oral and written language. Word Study encompasses phonemic awareness, phonological awareness, spelling patterns, word-solving strategies, and word origins, which are included in our continuum. We believe understanding the principles and patterns of language will ensure all students are effective problem solvers when reading and writing. We believe understanding the principles and patterns of language will allow students to communicate effectively and to be understood by their audience. We believe Word Study instruction develops the cognitive structures necessary to use effective word-solving strategies. This is accomplished in a variety of ways throughout the literacy block when the students learn important principles of how words work and basic spelling patterns. We believe students learn best through an approach that encourages inquiry, the forming and testing of hypotheses, the ability to reflect on what has been learned, and the ability to transfer knowledge and understanding from one situation to another. We believe the evidence of student learning is found through authentic daily work, inside and outside of school. And finally, we believe that effective instruction is dependent upon the teacher's knowledge of individual students, a developmental progression, and curriculum objectives. As you can see, the goal is to have our students be capable of transferring knowledge of how words work to new situations in reading and writing. So looking ahead, we look forward to evaluating the impact of having clearer standards when we receive our 2010-11 MAP scores. In addition, spelling questions were added to our end-of-unit assessments this year. And beginning with next year, we will be able to monitor the progress of students through the use of PARS and how they score on the spelling questions on our end-of-unit assessments. Moving on to another topic. The State of Missouri recommends that 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade students receive 90 minutes of reading instruction on a daily basis, and that 4th and 5th graders should receive 60 minutes of reading instruction on a daily basis. In addition, the State Department recommends that children in 1st through 5th grade should receive 60 minutes of writing instruction each day. According to the survey data, the recommended minutes are not consistently met in all classrooms. The first set of bars indicates the percentage of teachers who report they have 60 or more minutes for reading instruction, in the red, and writing instruction in the brown. The second bars indicate the percentage of principals who said they are able to create time in the master schedule for teachers to have at least 60 minutes of uninterrupted reading time, indicated in the red, and 60 minutes of uninterrupted writing time in the brown. Now we'll move to our Reading Intervention Program. Our Reading Intervention Specialist serves children in kindergarten through 5th grade who are not reading on grade level. The structure contains multiple interventions that focus on comprehension, fluency, and decoding. The interventions are selected based on the specific needs of individual learners. Reading Recovery is one of our many interventions. It is for 1st-grade students and is an intense, one-on-one intervention. It is designed to serve the lowest-performing students, and the intervention lasts 12 to 20 weeks. The Missouri Department of Education expects a minimum of 75% of the students who participate in Reading Recovery to discontinue on grade level within that 12 to 20 weeks. As you can tell by this chart, Parkway consistently meets the state target. At this time, we do not have a consistent system to monitor progress over time. However, you may know that we redesigned a position last year, and we now have a District Reading Intervention Facilitator position. And she and I have visited, and beginning next year, we will have available each August a report of how our 2nd and 3rd grade students are performing who participated in Reading Recovery. So look forward to that report in August. When MAP data was analyzed for students participating in Reading Intervention, there was inconsistent results in completely closing the achievement gap. The students receiving Reading Intervention in 4th grade scored below the comparison group of students who did not have Reading Intervention. And in 5th grade, they scored very close to how their peers scored. Although the gap is not completely closed, it is important for us to remember that students were selected for Reading Intervention because they were below grade level, and by the time the MAP came, they were scoring very close to their peers on the MAP assessment. Survey data indicates that the majority of teachers, administrators, and families rate the Reading Intervention Program as good or excellent, as indicated by the green and pink sections on this chart. Now we'll move to literacy coaches. As a result of Proposition R, we were fortunate to implement a literacy coach program. The literacy coach's job description includes a variety of responsibilities. Each coach is expected to spend 20% of their time contributing to district-level work. This may include: working on developing curriculum with the units of study, helping write and revise the Common Assessments, facilitating salary-credit professional development opportunities for teachers across the district, and facilitating sessions at our Summer Literacy Institute, as well as they were a strong part of the Word Study Continuum. The other 80% of their time is dedicated to supporting teachers at the building level. They support all teachers through grade-level literacy meetings, as well as data-analysis meetings. In addition, they support some teachers through structures such as classroom coaching, group coaching, and building study groups. Data collection tools for evaluating the literacy coach model included a survey. Teachers and administrators overwhelmingly rate the literacy coach model as excellent or good, as indicated by the green and pink parts of these charts. In addition, an analysis of MAP data was conducted. However, it is important to remember that this is data on 2 of the 6 grade levels for which the coaches support. The data does not indicate a significant difference between the MAP gain scores for teachers who spend additional time with a coach compared to those who don't. However, it is important to remember that the increase in the overall MAP achievement data is linked to the curriculum and assessment work performed by the literacy coach. If you remembered, I shared earlier in the presentation that since 2008, the first year we had literacy coaches, and the first year we had units of study, the Communication Arts MAP scores have increased by 10% in 3rd grade, 13% in 4th grade, and 8% in 5th grade. Building-level data indicates that when the coaching system is working effectively, it has an impact on student achievement. This chart displays MAP data from one of the buildings that ranked the literacy coach model as highly effective on the survey. In these charts, the yellow line represents the district, the red line represents the school, and the pink line represents the state proficiency target. And I'm sorry that on this one chart, the colors aren't there, and that's the one I'm going to be pointing to. As you can see here, the red line is the school, and starting in 3rd grade, their scores are below both the state proficiency line, and the state proficiency line is the shorter line that you see there with the triangle on it, and it's below the district line. However, by the time the children are in 5th grade, we see that that school has surpassed the state, and they've caught up with the district. We met with the teachers from this building last week, and they consistently reported to us that a big factor in the graphs looking this way was their collaborative work that was facilitated by the literacy coach. So we will move on to recommendations. In order to ensure that the Elementary Communication Arts Program supports the Parkway mission and vision, the Elementary Communication Arts Committee makes the following recommendations. Recommendations are made in the following four categories: curriculum, assessment, instruction, and stakeholders. In the area of curriculum, we recommend that we explicitly align the enduring understandings, knowledge, and skills to the mission and vision, as well as the newly adopted Common Core Standards. We also realize the need to audit the curriculum to ensure that curriculum outcomes are rigorous and that they are aligned between grade levels ranging from preschool through 5th grade. A specific focus will be placed on the preschool-through-2nd-grade reading curriculum. We also realize that revisions will specifically focus on opportunities for transfer of learning, creativity, and civic responsibility through reading and writing. Finally, in the area of curriculum, we recommend that we evaluate the rigor of our writing curriculum, including outcomes for usage of standard English, including spelling, grammar, and punctuation. In the area of assessment, we recognize a need to develop and implement a balanced assessment system for both reading and writing, using a variety of assessments, including benchmark, curriculum-based, performance, diagnostic assessments, and formative assessments. We also recommend the development of a system to ensure systematic assessment of data for all grade levels, not just our grade levels who take the MAP test. And finally, in the area of assessment, we recommend to develop structures and programs to ensure that families receive clear information regarding student progress based on assessment reports that are easy to understand. In the area of instruction, we realize a need to revise the curriculum to include specific information and examples of differentiation for all students. This will include a differentiation guide to support teachers, as well as a troubleshooting guide. We see a need to align all intervention programs through a district-wide intervention menu to ensure that all interventions are supplemental to our core programs, and that all students have guaranteed access to the core curriculum. We will develop structures that ensure all students have adequate time to develop as readers and writers. And finally, in the area of stakeholders, we will develop systems that provide adequate time for all educators who support, who work with a given child, to have time to collaboratively work, to set goals, to monitor progress, and to design instruction. We recommend that we provide job-embedded professional development related to differentiation of instruction that is informed by ongoing assessment data. At the COMARTs Committee, they shared that we know a lot of differentiation strategies, but we really haven't thought about, what does that look like in small-group reading? What does that look like in whole-group writing? So that's the professional development we're talking about there. We will develop opportunities for families to understand the learner outcomes and instructional strategies utilized within a reading and writing workshop. And finally, but extremely important, we need to design a data collection process that will ensure accurate, ongoing monitoring of goals for each of the components within the elementary programs, including our Reading Intervention Program, our primary grades, and our literacy coach model. I will return to you in December of 2011 to present a curriculum framework. At that time, the framework will include all of the items that are listed in Appendix V in your notebook, but to highlight, we will time for all educators who support with -- who work with a given child to have time to collaboratively work, to set goals, to monitor progress, and to design instruction. We recommend that we provide job-embedded professional development related to differentiation of instruction that is informed by ongoing assessment data. At the COM Arts Committee, they shared that we know a lot of differentiation strategies, but we really haven't thought about what does that look like in small-group reading? What does that look like in whole-group writing? So that's the professional development we're talking about there. We will develop opportunities for families to understand the learner outcomes and instructional strategies utilized within a reading and writing workshop. And finally, but extremely important, we need to design a data collection process that will ensure accurate, ongoing monitoring of goals for each of the components within the elementary programs, including our reading intervention program, our primary grades, and our literacy coach model. I will return to you in December of 2011 to present a curriculum framework. At that time, the framework will include all of the items that are listed in Appendix V in your notebook, but to highlight, we will include statements that will clearly indicate how the COM Arts Program aligns to the mission, vision, and how the learning principles look within a reading and writing classroom in the elementary level. We will include curriculum outcomes, assessments, and sample lessons. A new and exciting part of the framework is that it will include an ongoing evaluation plan. So you will see how we will monitor elementary COM Arts throughout the next five years instead of waiting for the sixth year to come and do a big analysis. But what are we going to do along the way? And finally, I will present to you a five-year strategic plan that will include specific strategies and action steps that we will use to achieve all of these recommendations, as well as a professional development plan. As a result of accomplishing the above recommendations, I am confident that we will have all the COGS within the Elementary Communication Arts Department working synergistically within our department. But more importantly, they will be working synergistically with the other departments that support children in Parkway. We are confident that as a result of that, we will be able to ensure that all students are capable, confident, and curious learners who can communicate clearly and effectively use the various forms of communication to respond to an ever-changing world. Thank you for the opportunity to share this evening, and at this time, I welcome comments or questions.
Anyone like to start with a question?
You know, it is exciting to have the building-level reports, which is the first time we've done that, but it does make it a much larger report.
What did you say? And everyone else who helped. I guess first of all, a comment, you know, as we're working on Project Parkway, at the beginning, we heard, very beginning at the steering committee, we learned everything is measurable. And being a non educator, I'm skeptical, but I'm learning more and more that that's true, and it's great to see some of that in here. It's amazing to me how you figure out how to measure things, but we're coming along and it's great. It's really great. And I like the survey of the vision statements, and so we have something to measure. That's great. As far as the literacy coaches, you talked about them working effectively, and I know that there has been some pushback since they started with maybe not using them as they were intended. Where do you feel on a scale of 1 to 10 we are with that? I mean, are we close?
We are much closer than we were a year ago even. I think that with the redesign of the teacher evaluation tool, once the tool is designed for the classroom teachers, then we will take that tool and make it very specific to the literacy coach. The literacy coaches actually started that over a year ago with Diane Sweeney, the consultant who's been training them. And then we put it on hold whenever we found out that the whole system was going to be revised for all teachers. So I think having that tool, which will clearly articulate the standards for an effective coach, will make it easier to see where we are in line and where we maybe need to provide development for coaches, development for teachers, development for administrators, so that we understand all of those parts. So I'm very, very confident that the new evaluation tool will support our endeavor in moving even further.
That's great. And the results of the teams that are working well together, it just proved that it works if indeed it's done the right way. So that was good to see. And you said one of the recommendations is to develop a system to ensure systematic assessment, data collection, and analysis for all grade levels. Is that something -- has that started? Where are we with that? Is that something we're starting from scratch?
We won't be starting completely from scratch, but we need to look at what we have in place. We need to evaluate. There were some survey questions, and you can go into more detail in the notebook, what assessments the teachers find the most helpful in informing their instruction. There were questions about the end-of-unit assessments, questions about the domine, questions about formative assessments. I think before we go too far, we need to pull together an assessment think tank, which will be one of the action steps. I won't wait till December to start that. You'll hear about it in December, but we will start that one sooner. But I think before we move too far, we need to ask some critical questions. What data do we need? Why do we need it? When do we need it? Who do we need it from? So we kind of need to create our assessment map of what do we need and why, when, and then see which assessments we have that fit into that. And the other key point will be, we need to lay that next to math, and science, and social studies, because it's the same teachers giving all of those assessments. And we really have to think about viability for our elementary teachers and for our students. So how can assessment become part of learning, and when should that be, and when should it be more formalized and outside? So I think we've got to start with what do we need?
Okay.
And then evaluate what we have, and then look. But that is one of my first ones.
So this isn't a year away. It's in progress, but it's going to take a while.
Right, right.
Okay, I was just curious.
I think we've created some assessments without that foundation of what do we need and why do we need it? And I think we need to back up and create that first, so that we have a tool to evaluate against what we currently have.
Okay. And differentiation, that's a word we've heard for years. I just wonder where we are with that. Not having kids in, well, in Parkway anymore, but especially elementary. I'm just curious, is it teacher-specific? Is it building-specific? Is it embedded in our professional development yet?
I think it's a little bit of all of those, but I don't know that it's systemic.
Okay.
And so I think that's part of what we're going to be looking at within Elementary Communication Arts, is how do we ensure all teachers have those tools and know when to use those tools? And I can speak of myself as a classroom teacher years and years ago, and some of those behind me will remember Kagan and Kagan. And I went through a week-long Kagan and Kagan workshop and learned all of the cooperative learning strategies, which was about differentiation. But we never took it to what does that mean for science? And when would you use it, and why would you use this one compared to this one? And that's what I heard from the committee about six weeks ago whenever we visited. And it was, we know them, we just haven't really looked at where do they fit into COM Arts, and when would you choose one over another? I certainly, this is making an inference, but looking that we have a comfort level with it, but we have trend lines that are all over the place, there's a disconnect somewhere. And so we need to figure out where that is. And I think one of our plans will be for it to be intentional systemic development for all teachers. We're starting with some salary credits next year that will be our group of teachers who kind of delve in first. We're offering a fall and a winter differentiation nine-hour session, twice. And then Ann Lepiccolo and I are offering a culturally responsive teaching within the reading and writing workshop in the fall. So we're kind of jumping in with some groups of teachers, let them be our base, and then figure out how we get it for all teachers.
With the mission and vision of Project Parkway, personally, I think that's going to be vital to meeting our mission.
Absolutely.
Yes, yeah. And then I just, we all know that, we've heard that with the MAP testing, they're going to do away with the writing portion, or is that my memory?
It's partially true. The performance event, which is the third-grade narrative writing for elementary, and then there's a performance event at the other grade levels as well, but in elementary, it's a third-grade. Historically, it's been a narrative writing piece. It did go away this year. I have been involved in a couple of meetings around the Smarter Balance Consortium that Missouri is a part of, and they have consistently said that the performance event will be part of that assessment, as well as more constructive response questions. Now, you know, we'll see what happens whenever the 31 states get together and really start working on the writing of that assessment. But they strongly share that their intent is to keep that. They're looking towards the Missouri State Test structure. So I'm hopeful, if it doesn't come back, it is critical for us to develop a performance event that we find a way to reliably score within our district. It is only fair to our students for us to have an assessment like that and to monitor their progress.
And that's exactly what my question was, because what's the use of collecting the data if we stop now?
Right.
So that's great. That's great to hear. I think that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Other board members? Mr. Major?
I guess, and Kathy, I appreciate the time offline discussing the lit coaches and some of those aspects. But I guess in looking at some of the data on the reading recovery, and remind me again, how long have we had the reading recovery program in place?
Oh, gosh, I don't -- Dr. Maxi, do you know? More than 10, yeah. I would say more than 10. I bet I don't know.
Okay. And we're clearly above what the state standard is, but is there any notion that there's another way to skin that cat? That we've been -- there seems to be one model out there for reading recovery.
Reading recovery is a model. It's one of our many interventions. One of the things that the think tank did last year is we looked at the different types of needs that children have, and how can we be more systemic in having a variety of interventions to meet their needs. Reading recovery isn't the only intervention, and that is really part of what we're looking at. Some of you may remember last July, whenever we reassigned reading specialists to buildings based on needs of students. I think that certainly opened some eyes to that, that possibly we weren't servicing the children reading recovery was most meant for. And so it's going to be interesting to see how that impacts our data. But with Melinda McDill, our district reading intervention facilitator, she is really asking hard questions of the reading specialist. Are you sure this is a child that reading recovery is the best intervention, and how do you know that? So we're really trying to be very, very thoughtful in that. It is effective. It is, you know, within that first-grade level. We've done some data analysis to show that it is sustainable over time, but it's not consistent. And so I think we'll know more about how to respond to reading recovery once we begin collecting that data every fall. As a mom of a child, of two children who had reading recovery, it made a huge difference in two of my own personal children's lives. So I know it's a good intervention, but I think we need to be thoughtful about for whom.
Yeah, I thought the year-to-year variation in the success rate was kind of striking.
You know, what's interesting is Melinda's now in our office suite, so she's close to me. She has been sharing data with me. I have data now down to individual school success, and she's going in and having individual conversations with schools and with teachers who maybe are not discontinuing as many children, and going out and problem-solving with them. So we're really tightening that up through a district-level data collection.
The reading specialist. Consistent application of standards and that sort of thing.
Yeah, reading specialists turn reading levels in to me once a month for every student who's on their caseload. And if we see children who flatline, Melinda or I are calling and saying, "Let's talk." And this is the first year that has happened. So it's.
Okay. I appreciate the dynamic approach.
Yeah.
Question, if you can turn my mic off. In Clayton, we did have a reading recovery-type program, and there was, there's a lot of very good follow-up over a period of 10 years. So I'll get that research and share it with you, for our reading recovery-type program.
And then I guess the final part of that question, which is just my own ignorance, where do those minutes come from for reading recovery? Are they, are we losing some other curricular instruction time in another area?
Any time that there is an intervention, you sacrifice something. And that is one of our biggest questions, is where do we sacrifice that? Typically, reading intervention happens outside of the reading time. If it's in the primary grades, it might happen within the 90 minutes of that reading block, so that they have 60 minutes in the classroom with their cohort teacher. If they are being serviced by a teacher who is funded through federal funds, they cannot be pulled during reading. It is a federal mandate that it has to be supplemental above and beyond what every other child gets. So we have some federal guidelines that give us some guidance with that as well. That is part of the reason why on our reading intervention menu, we are really pushing towards more and more push-in reading support within the reading workshop or the writing workshop. So the reading specialists are pushing in during that time. We are tracking the students who we're pushing in with, so that we can analyze their data at the end of the year to see how effective that was. Research shows that that's a more effective model, especially with our older children. So we're trying to have our intervention be more and more like that, so that children aren't being pulled from other subject areas. But that is, we have conversations around that every year. What do we pull them from? The other thing that we're really trying to do with that is if a child needs two interventions, so this happened at multiple buildings this year, where a child really qualified for reading intervention, and they qualified for ESOL support, that would have been an hour out of the classroom every day. Not okay. So the team came together, what's the predominant need now? And if it's ESOL, the ESOL teacher pulls, the reading teacher pushes in. Then maybe six or eight weeks down the road, we reevaluate and figure out a different, maybe there's something else has come up or a new focus. So now the ESOL teacher's going to pull in, and the reading specialist is going to pull. So we're really trying to be cognizant of not having collision of good intent.
Okay. But no, like, standard guidelines of if you're going to take time, take it out of? So it varies building to building and classroom to classroom?
We give recommendations. Dr. Maxi's very good at providing those recommendations every fall. But building schedules just add a huge dynamic to that, as our principals would certainly tell you.
Okay. Thank you.
I forgot one, I'm sorry. You mentioned the survey showed that the minutes for reading and writing instruction were not consistently met necessarily, and that was the survey. I wish that the parents and the teachers who objected to us adding 20 minutes to the elementary school day could read that. And if they're listening, I hope that they look at the report and read that, because that was so important to us for adding those minutes. So I just wanted to say that.
The list of things that are going to be done in that 20 minutes is amazing to me, though.
Who actually monitors the work of the literacy coaches? Is that the primary responsibility of the principal, or?
The principals are the evaluator in the building. I have been called to give input into a couple of evaluations. Some of the principals and I have very close conversations on a regular basis. I support the work of the literacy coaches. We meet a couple of times a month to study and to problem-solve and for training, but the actual formal evaluation is the building principal.
Building principal. To what extent do you think they're effective in the schools overall? I mean, do you think there's high level of effectiveness, 80% across the board, 20%? What do you think? That's probably not a fair question at this point.
It varies by building.
But I guess this is the third year for the program, isn't it, basically? So those that are less effective, are they on some kind of a plan to improve how they're offering the program for the staff?
You know, what's interesting, if whether or not a literacy coach model is effective in a building is more than an individual. It's the relationship between the principal and the coach. It's the learning culture of the building. It's the openness of the teachers. So I think as we move forward and we get clarity around the expectations and the job description, I think we have to look at where that improvement plan might lie, because it might be the coach, it might be the building administrator, it might be the culture of the building. So I think we have to, I think we need to identify the buildings where maybe it's not perceived to be effective. And with the survey questions, you noticed the charts that shows how the different buildings ranked it. I think one of our first steps needs to be look at the buildings who did not rank it very high, and figure out what are the barriers within that building, and develop the plan around those barriers. So having the building-level data, this is a case where it's really going to help us be able to pinpoint where we might have some challenges, so that we can strategically problem-solve where it needs to happen within the system.
Great. It's a great opportunity, so it should be used to maximum level, obviously. The reading interaction specialists, do they actually interface with the reading/writing workshop?
Some do. If they are pushing into a classroom, they are pushing in during reading or writing workshop, depending on if the child's identified needs is written expression, or if it's reading comprehension, or writing about the reading, then it might be during reading time. or writing about the reading, then it might be during reading time. So in that way, they certainly are in contact with it. The reading specialists participate in much of our development around reading and writing workshop, which is so critical because as they are pulling out to support children or pushing in to support children, we need to have common instructional language. And they also, the reading specialists, are becoming more and more effective at looking at our units of study so they know what the children are learning and can teach to the same standards, but maybe with a few different strategies. So they do interface with it that way. Most of the reading specialists attend team meetings with the teachers as well, so they interact with it through that.
So if they're both working with the same student, there is a coordinated effort?
We are attempting at that. It's not good enough. That's why one of the recommendations is to ensure that if a child has multiple teachers working with them, they need time to collaboratively set goals. Because if the classroom teacher has these two goals and the reading specialist has these two goals and it's a tangled reader, are we causing more tanglement by too many goals? So we need structures so that we can guarantee they have that collaboration. I don't know that it's guaranteed yet.
Do you see as time goes on that the students that are below the basic level will get to the basic level? Because as you read through the various school reports and data, there are students who are still at the below-basic level.
We have reduced our percentage of children at the below-basic level over the past three years. So I'm hopeful that we can continue to move in that trend.
Right. Yeah, I did. There is some progress that's shown, I think, throughout the data. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Beth?
Thank you for this very comprehensive report. I had a couple of questions about reading recovery, and you'll have to excuse me. Most of what I know about reading recovery was from when my kids were in elementary school, and it's been several years. So some of my mental images might be outdated. But from what I recall, as you said earlier, it's only first graders. And do they pull a certain number, the certain number of lowest-performing students? Or is it a percentage?
I'm hesitating. I will ... I'll tell you what. Reading Recovery National Council says that you pull the lowest percentage of children. However, I've pushed back on that the last couple of years, and we are not doing that in all buildings. It used to be the bottom 20% regardless of the children's level got reading recovery services. We were pulling children who were in the average band because they were in the lowest 20%. They need to be in the classroom. So we are only pulling children who are below the average band, which is why we were able to make some of the reading intervention staffing changes last July because we could evaluate how many children are truly below level who need this intervention so that we're not providing intervention for children because we have time available. And it was out of good intent. It was good intent. And what the Reading Recovery Council would say, even if your cohort is above average, these 20% are always below their peers because their peers are above average. And so the intent is to get them up to what the average is of that cohort. Whenever we look at the pyramid of instruction, the base of the pyramid should really be working towards getting those children up to where the rest of the children are. So we're really trying to be more strategic in selecting our students. And if they're in the average band, we're staying in the classroom.
Well, that sounds like a backwards design. Because as I was trying to remember, I thought it was a set number of kids that were pulled. And, you know, the lowest 10 in McKelvey might be vastly different than the lowest 10 in Riverbend. So that sounds really good. I also wanted to ask you some questions about the relationship between the reading specialists and literacy coaches. Is there any overlap? And when the literacy ... When the reading specialists release a significant number of their students, then what do they do? How do they contribute every day, you know, in the second half of the school year or the last third of the school year, when they've gotten these kids up to where they should be? Then what do they do?
We have very separate job descriptions, but those job descriptions complement each other. So if we look at the reading intervention specialist job description, it is to increase student achievement through working directly with students based on identified needs. The job description of the literacy coach is to increase student achievement by providing just-in-time, job-embedded professional development for teachers. So they are both impacting student achievement, but they're coming at it from a different level. Sometimes the coach might be providing professional development for a reading specialist who is trying to support within reading and writing workshop with a push-in model. Sometimes they both come to data meetings. So if the literacy coach is facilitating a data meeting, the reading specialist may come in and support because they may be talking about children who are not meeting the target, and the reading specialist is very skilled and knowledgeable about how to help children who are having difficulty move forward. So they cross in that role, that they complement each other depending on the work. The reading specialist managed to keep caseloads throughout the year. With the new reading intervention program that I talked about that we are implementing this year, we've started individualized student goal sheets. So every student who is in reading intervention has a goal sheet with targeted dates to achieve those goals. And at minimum, those have to be evaluated every six weeks. And then they decide, yes, the data shows we're moving in the right direction, we're in the right intervention. Or maybe we missed the mark here, maybe we need to try something different. Maybe the child's achieved the goal, they go back into the classroom. But then they evaluate if a child moves back into the classroom. As they move back in, the reading specialist doesn't just cold turkey, "You go back into the classroom." They spend some time transitioning them in. But because of our data collection with our data meetings that the literacy coaches are facilitating with the end-of-unit trend sheets or with looking at the monthly reading levels, students, we're identifying students now, middle of the year, that may have looked at the beginning of the year like they were progressing, but something has caused them to stall a little bit. The reading specialist now can pick those up throughout the year instead of waiting until the next fall when we pick up a new round of children. So the student caseload has become much more flexible based on current data throughout the school year. So I've not had a reading specialist call yet and say, "I don't have any children." And I'm monitoring their data. They're working with children who, many of them are right there at the cusp and really hoping that with this little effort, they will get there.
And what about our students who need interventions that are beyond first grade? If the reading recovery model is for first graders, what happens? We get lots of immigrant children that come in, you know, they have not been through our program since kindergarten, and their reading levels might be very much below their grade level. So what do we do for those kids?
Our reading intervention menu has 12 interventions on it that are designed for children K through 5. So we look at the child's needs, and then we decide, okay, what is their predominant reading need right now? Do we need to work on comprehensive, all of the pieces of the processing system? Do we need to work on decoding? Do we need to work on fluency? Is it comprehension? Is it written expression about reading? So we really dig in and diagnose what is the critical point here. Then we pick the intervention. So we have interventions that go K-5. So we do have children on caseload in all the grade levels. One of the interventions we did add this year is leveled literacy intervention, and it is a reading recovery-like program for three children to one teacher that we are using for second and third grade students who moved into our district who are not here for reading recovery.
That exactly.
Or children who in first grade looked like they were ticking along okay, and for some reason in second or third grade, it just, the pieces didn't work together. It's very much like reading recovery, but it's three students, one teacher. It's a 16 to 22-week intervention, and it is designed to accelerate and be on grade level by the end of that.
Great. I had another question about differentiation. When we were hearing from our families earlier in the citizen's statement section, when they were talking about their children's advanced level of reading and, you know, how those children can be so bored in a general ed classroom when they're not getting that differentiation of instruction that they need. So how are you, how are we equipping our teachers, our elementary teachers, especially in the lower grades, with the kids that do not qualify for Mosaic's Academy yet are so far beyond their grade level, reading level? Like the first graders who are reading Harry Potter versus the first graders who are really just early readers?
So a couple of things. One of the things that we've really been working on is reconsidering the mental model that some educators have, that if you are on a first-grade level, you don't read books outside of that range because the content isn't appropriate for you. That is a struggle. If a first grader is reading at a level where they can read and truly comprehend Harry Potter, you have to be careful about the content that gets in their hands. So that is a challenge. That doesn't stop us. We need to be achieving towards that. Interesting in the transition meetings that the TLA team has been having with buildings that are getting new administrators, that was one of the things that I felt bad, but I learned at Barrett's. They have the same classroom libraries as everybody else. They need different classroom libraries because so many of their children come in reading. So as I look at the textbook money for next year, that's one of the things I'm really going to consider, is where do we need to change the classroom libraries based on the needs of students in the classroom? So we're really working towards that. The other piece is we need development for teachers. First-grade teachers aren't necessarily comfortable conferring and teaching around a book on a fifth-grade level. They haven't done that kind of work. So not only do we need to have differentiation strategies for here, we need to have them for here. So that will be part of our study. What do we do when they already know? So when our salary credits next year, that will be part of what we're working on.
Thank you.
Helen, do you have anything?
No, I was just sitting here while you were going through that, and I was thinking, where do I sign up to be a literacy coach?
We're interviewing tomorrow.
What time?
See, we have one at 3:00 and 3:45, so how about 4:30?
Okay. Thank you. Very good.
Lisa, it's very obvious that you've been having a lot of fun. You're thoroughly immersed in this and have produced a wonderful document that we're all going to be reviewing and looking at, not just for now, but as we go through the future. I'm really intrigued and excited that you acknowledge that this will be a process that we don't wait five years, but it's an ongoing thing. If we need to make course corrections, that we can do that and need to do that because five years is way too long to wait if something's not working. What is your vision and how that would be implemented and how you would go about reviewing your strategic plan?
You know, as I work with the Elementary Communication Arts Committee on June 2nd and 3rd, which will be our first two work sessions to develop our strategic plan of how we're going to achieve all of these recommendations and what are our priority recommendations? Where do we start first when they're all so very important? We have a structure in place where I meet with an Elementary Communication Arts Committee twice a month. That committee has a primary teacher, an intermediate teacher, a reading specialist, and a literacy coach from each building. So we will have multiple meetings. So if we're meeting one time a month next year, they will be the driving force, almost the steering committee for Project Parkway. They will become my steering committee for the strategic plan and how we implement that. And one of our things as we develop that plan is when do we need to monitor? What do we need to monitor? And how will we do it? So that we're setting out for each recommendation, how will we know we're making progress to that? And when will we collect that data? So that will be part of the plan that we will be putting together. So we'll see what the committee comes up with. It is, our structures of pars will certainly, certainly help us be able to do that as we are able to pull data consistently.
Well, it's certainly exciting that you're able to get this data now down to the building and, in some cases, into classrooms and kids. You certainly fit the mold of curious, capable, and competent.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to jump up in conclusion. I wanted just to acknowledge, I think we all do, with Lisa going first. She is the first curriculum evaluation of this cycle, and you noticed it's very different. And to do it with each school, it was really a challenge. We, so thank you for going first. Don't forget that. But I'm really here, so don't forget flowers. Not that you're not going to all get flowers, but I wanted the board to know. Tomorrow, Lisa and I will be meeting with her advisory team. She will be hooded with her doctorate in about two weeks. So she was doing that at the same time. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
President Jacob?
One comment of, I guess, at the overall level as we move forward into some of the other evaluations. And Dr. Tyson, I guess the, I know my limitations, and I certainly don't want to speak for the rest of the board members, but perhaps a statistical intervention is in order for the folks that are going to be reading all these reports. Some of the footnotes befuddled me. So if you've got some notions about raising the general talents of the receptors.
Maybe we'll have one of the professional development opportunities this summer. More information. My girl.
Thank you.
You're a brave man.
I think Dr. Marty's probably really specialized in four different situations.
There we go. Thank you again. We have a work session. 13.01 budget. Mr. Westgarten, if you can come to the podium and help us, we appreciate it.
Good evening, President Jacob, members of the board, Dr. Sinti, Dr. Marty, and Ms. Calanda. First, I want to congratulate President Jacob, Mr. Major, and Ms. Mogerman for winning their election. Their service to the Parkway community has been fantastic, and we are grateful for three additional years of service from them. Tonight, I am here to present the board our second update on next year's budget. Before I do, I do want to recognize somebody who I was surprised when it showed up. Joyce Peisel, she's my administrative assistant. She has spent a lot of time this year as we're going through the Munis conversion in our budget process, and she has taken on the training of all the people who are inputting the budget into Munis. And I really appreciate all the stuff that she has done this year and every year as she helps compile the budget and put it in its final form. Thank you. Here is a reminder that our promise to the board was not to increase next year's budget, and I'm happy to report that we accomplished that goal with room to spare. The board has approved the following initiatives: tuition-free full-day kindergarten and multi-year agreements with the teachers and nurses. The district's goals during the budgeting process was to save money and reduce staffing in targeted areas. Hopefully, you remember earlier this year when we were, the list of budget reallocations when tuition-free full-day kindergarten was approved. The district reallocated budgets after reviewing different programs using four years of actual data and adjusting budgets accordingly. SIPS Council decided to offer a one-time retirement incentive to reduce support staffing. In addition, the district is implementing a long-term view of any voluntary or involuntary terminations to ensure that the open position is needed. State funding has been at the forefront of everyone's mind. We're all well aware of their budget surfolds over the last couple of years. The state of Missouri seems to have turned the corner. Revenue for the state has rebounded well above expectations for this fiscal year. There doesn't seem to be additional reductions for hold-harmless districts next year, and all districts, one of the things that's taking place within this legislative session is that all this school districts in the state are trying to complete a long-term fix to the foundation formula. But interestingly, if nothing gets accomplished, hold-harmless districts will receive full funding, not next year, but the year after. That's kind of the way the legislation was passed late last year. Lastly, this is a reminder to that state funding is important, but it only is about 5.1% of the district's budget. One very important note should be made concerning the state of Missouri issues. I think we're all well aware, excuse me, I think we are well aware of the Turner versus Clayton case and the potential impact on all school districts in the state. Missouri General Assembly is currently debating a fix to Turner, and all school organizations have endorsed House Bill 763 to assist in the orderly movement of students from unaccredited school districts to accredited ones. Most people feel that this will not get resolved, that Turner will not get resolved until the last week of the legislative session, if at all. I placed this into our presentation tonight just to remind the board of the potential impact of approved legislation on Parkway's revenue and expenses. of approved legislation on Parkway's revenue and expenses. The district has not adjusted either its revenue or expenses because there is no certainty that HB 763 or any other bill will be passed at this time. So that, this might be the one particular piece that you might see between now and the end of the year. Fiscal year 1011 revenue and fiscal year 1112 revenue look very similar. As you can see, revenue projects to be 205.48 million, and we will have little change next year. This graph illustrates one of the interesting things, here, I'll play with the little thing over here. This pullout over in its direction is, it's interesting that you pull it out, and it shows the non-local revenue that we are receiving, and it only amounts to nine and a half percent total. The other piece that's interesting is, as you can see, if I can get this to work, there we go, that property taxes have a huge impact on our revenue, and it makes up 72.26% of our revenue. Next year, as you can see, revenue will be projecting at 205.34 million. You can see how little property taxes change next year. Usually, property taxes have a little bit larger yearly increase, but our initial assessments that we just received were slightly down and making property taxes change minimally. And just FYI, the increase that you do see in the difference if you toggle back and forth is due to new construction. Budgeted operating expenditures for fiscal year 1011 are at 213.1 million. Actual expenditures are still tracking in a positive manner, FYI, and I think the district will be well below our budgeted expenditures. That's always a good, good thing. We traditionally do that. Fiscal year 1112 expenditures are reduced by almost $3 million. If we, if we would toggle back and forth, we could see the changes in certified staffing over here, and that is of a result of implementing, you can see the difference, it's basically the tuition-free full-day kindergarten, and a drop in program expenditures that are up here. And that drop in expenditures is a result of the budget reallocation process. And here's just a quick pro quo on our revenue as a whole. As you can see the difference between fiscal year 1011 and fiscal year 1112, the drop of about $3 million. Finally, here's a graphical representation of the district's year-end operating fund balance. This shows everyone the projected year-end fund balance based on projected actual outcomes. The district will have a 23% fund balance this year and 22% fund balance next year. Both of these percentages are well above our, as you can see over here, here's a 13.5%. That is our operating, minimum operating reserve, and then the 3.8% over here, that is our stabilization reserve that we implemented in the late 90s. Lastly, I wanted to remind the board of the district's voluntary rollback. You can see the information up here in the, on the right side of the slide. We have a voluntary rollback, and it's dated back from the passage of Prop R in 2006. To date, the district has not accessed its, this potential levy to keep taxes as low as possible. We could have assessed the levy this year to provide tuition-free full-day kindergarten, but chose to do the difficult process of reallocating budgets and reducing our workforce. The voluntary rollback information, as we can see again on the right side, where is that thing? No, it's not a big deal. If the, the voluntary rollback information is on the right side of the slide. If the district levied the voluntary rollback, the district's fund balance would increase to 29.2%. And if I can hit that, you can see that right there at the top. And that increase in revenue is a total of 15.2 million. In conclusion, the district has accomplished the following during the budget cycle. We have reduced expenditures by 3 million. We are keeping our solid year-end operating fund balance, and the district has a long-term plan to keep expenditures down. Lastly, the board needs to keep in mind that Turner has not been fixed, and any fix to this ruling will have potential impact on Parkway. And with that, I will open it up for discussion.
More questions?
Wes, between 2010 and 2011, how do you have the medical insurance, medical and dental going down?
We have, we have looked at that and have adjusted it appropriately. When we look at it, we've, usually you have about a 7.5% increase or so. So we're, we've adjusted it appropriately to where our actual expenditures are tracking. And that's just, I mean, that was the number that we had going forward, that we feel that that's actually where our benefits and that will end up next year. I mean, so-
So in other words, the expenses aren't coming in as high as you projected for this year?
That is correct.
So you've modified the budget for next year?
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess there was, another, another election took place on April 5th.
Sure.
And so we now have a, an elected assessor in St. Louis County. And I guess just when I look at the revenue pie chart, and 72 point something percent of our revenue comes from property tax, I see potential for trouble there on the horizon.
Sure.
I guess, first question is, what's the timeline for when, when the elected assessor can start having an impact?
Almost immediately, almost immediately, at least from Eugene Leon, who used to be the appointed assessor. He's still currently with the county. He didn't know how that would turn, but I think the election is more favorable with the outcome that it actually took, that actually took place. But we have to remember Hancock Amendment, I mean, one of the things that Hancock Amendment does, no matter where assessments go, you adjust the tax rate up, or the tax rate accordingly to ensure that you have, that everyone, all the taxing entities can still continue to have, maintain the same amount of revenue. With that said, it will be interesting to see if there are, is some, an initial political posturing there. But I think, for the most part, I think we'll see, we'll probably see those numbers in July when we, there's two more numbers that we'll get besides the initial one that I just sent last week. We'll see numbers, pre-Board of Equalization numbers in July and in post in September. And, you know, I think there might be some adjustments, but it'd probably be, it'll probably be cosmetic in nature, I think. And again, we can adjust the tax rate accordingly to secure that we have the same amount of revenue even, or projected in our current budget.
Okay. And I wasn't clear on the, how does the Hancock Amendment-
Yeah, Hancock-
-impact on the assessor's role?
Hancock Amendment was created in up years to keep property taxes lower than what actual increases in assessed valuation as it goes. Well, obviously, if the assessor comes in and decreases the value, which I think potentially could take place, it allows you to adjust the tax rate up to secure that you have, to make sure that you have the same amount of revenue that you had from the prior year. You understand, as far as that goes, it kind of has a teeter-totter effect on it. And in the end, the, when you equal, the dollar should be the same.
Okay. So it's essentially a buffer going up and a-
That's correct. Absolutely. It doesn't allow our revenue for property taxes to go up with inflation, say for instance, or increases in assessment in an up cycle and a down. It keeps us whole.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple of us today were discussing future bond issues, and I know there's a projection out there about when we're going to do this, and we couldn't recall. When, when-
It's interesting, when Scott and Mike were here, we were discussing the same thing. You know, the money, Scott said the money ran out in the summer of 2013. So, you know, we could, you know, last time we ran in the general election in November, and hopefully I'm not putting Paul on the spot, but it could be 2012, fall of 2012, that makes some sense, but we haven't gotten that far yet. I would expect either that or, yeah, I would assume that potentially would be where we would need to do it, so.
I know for some of us, it's probably too soon to bring those words up, but we were just curious. Thank you.
So it's either that or 2013, November. I think we usually, traditionally try to do the November. We've always had good luck there.
Thank you.
Yep.
In one of your communications with us, you had indicated that it looked like property values might be going down about 2%, a little less than that.
Yeah.
And then you were kind of looking to recover that, then a small-
That's part of that Hancock Amendment, as far as, that's just adjusting it to make that, make sure that the revenue stays equal.
Okay. But we don't have to do that if we look at our budget and say, well, we think we're okay, we could?
We could do that, yes. I mean, and obviously, it's-
We could accept less.
It's early, and again, the memo that I did see you, or send you, was, it's non-binding, it was an estimate, but traditionally, we've done that to make sure that the revenue for the district stays whole. Because we do, we're trying to operate and break even, and I think we need as much revenue as we can, especially on the other end, when state revenues have decreased substantially over the last couple of years.
I think, at least myself and maybe the rest of the board too, at least, we'd like to look at it and make, it'd be nice to not have to have an increase, and this is a year when it's fairly small.
We definitely can take a look at that. I'll write it down, and I'll let you know what the impact is.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gart? Okay. Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
I think we have out there a couple of students that we might want to recognize that are here tonight. What school are you from?
UMSL.
Oh, we love UMSL. In the summertime, we get to go down there and take a legal course. So thank you, we appreciate having you here tonight. We'll move on to 14.O, policy review, 14.O1, IMD.BPNG ceremonies and observances. I don't see Mr. Mertens's.
Do you have Mike here?
All right, I don't know if-
Wes, could you handle the, this, this flag?
Yeah, I think this is the flag one, isn't it?
Mike Mertens was-
No.
We don't have to call them unless they're-
Well, I don't know if there's any questions, so you might be.
Mr. President, if I could just comment, I was questioning you based on slight variance between our board policy and state statute, and the work that Mike Mertens did in bringing us up to date far exceeded merely closing that gap. So my compliments to Mike, and I think this will be a wonderful, wonderful guide and asset for all of our building principles.
And I'll let him know that. And I know he's worked really hard with the custodians to make sure that they're working within those guidelines to make sure everything takes place.
If you would just take that back to him, too, the implementation, obviously, will be good. And there was one school we were at that the flag was rather tattered, so on. Was that Carmen Trill?
I wouldn't want to name names, Mr. President. Has that one been replaced? Because we were, we were looking through it to make sure it's good. Excellent.
Excellent. Thank you. And Mr. Tandy, are there any questions for Mr. Tandy on 14.O2, JC.BPNG, school district attendance areas?
I hate to be that guy, Mr. President, but-
Our Director of Communications is ready for you. Thank you, Paul.
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Tandy, I attended part of a meeting where I think this particular, and it's actually the guidelines we're looking at, is that correct?
You should have, you should have both of them. The actual policy is only one paragraph.
Right. So it's the administrative guidelines or the, the list of criteria?
Yes.
I guess if you could talk to those briefly, and if there is a, is there any particular weighting assigned to them, or?
You know, we, as you'll notice, we did review these a couple of years ago, and I think we may have made only just a minor change, word or two here or there. One of the challenges with this, as you think through it, they all make sense when you read them. However, they can be contradictory when you get into the reality of playing out changing boundaries. I mean, one can weigh against the other. And my understanding is that the numbering 1 through 9 is not intended to indicate that number 1 is any more important than number 9 or vice versa. The only thing that had come up at the last meeting that initially received kind of some support, but then I think after you left, by the end, there, it sort of had turned, and that was this notion of student mobility. And initially, there was some feeling that maybe we should try to think of a guideline on mobility, but then as we talked it over, while that's important, the feeling was, once you, while there are other factors that would be important too, if you started going down that road, you could, you could come up with a number of other factors. So what would, if you did mobility, what would the guideline look like? And we had trouble with that. We couldn't come up with any wording that really seemed to make sense and that didn't beg the question of, well, what about this and what about that? So.
Okay. And I guess I, in reading through these, I guess the one that leaps off the page at me is number 5. And I welcome input, particularly from anybody on the steering committee for Project Parkway. But equalize the load as nearly as possible in each building according to the facilities available. I think one of our lessons learned is that equal is not necessarily equity. And so I think from that perspective, and I guess, I know this was reviewed in 2008, and I'll wager my vote is on the record regarding said review, but somehow, it seems like a more important list in April of 2011. So I guess my, my mind is kind of playing through scenarios in the, in the not-too-distant future, and whether any of these may constrain us and/or constrain the discussion and evaluation of options. So I guess I just wanted to make sure that we all had a hard look at that, and I wanted to put my, my notions out there regarding that. Does number 5 really capture where our concerns lie? And I guess initially, my thought was kind of split it up and thought, you know, the mobility might be a factor involved there, but maybe it's more, more fundamental than that. And I guess I'd, I'd welcome any comments or inputs or-
I agree with you. I don't know.
It doesn't sound like Project Parkway is-
It makes it sound like we're going to divide them equally. Yeah, and that's not what we want.
Here's your 100, here's your 100.
We want equitable, my, I can't come up with the word, equitable.
Yeah, I really should say, according to the capacity of each building. I mean, we have certain buildings that are identical in construction. And so, you know, they should be relatively close in terms of capacity.
And honestly, I don't like that we're calling our students the load.
Load.
I mean-
Maybe that's it. It's not, it's not student-centered.
Yeah.
That's really the operative word there, though. I mean, I don't know if that's the appropriate word, but that really goes, I think, what Bruce was getting at, because when you think of a facility, you think about the load, that's a very, almost ambiguous term, because the load could take into consideration the construction of the building, the staff, the facilities involved. I think that, that just kind of lends to the ambiguities to it. I mean, you can equalize the load, but have 100 students in one facility, 200 in the other facility. It just depends on what, it refers more to the capacity of the building. I think capacity is probably, you know, something.
I think that would be good.
We can definitely look at number 5 and come back to you with some other ideas for that.
And two, also, you said 1 to 9 isn't meant to order them in any way. I would suggest maybe removing the numbers and putting bullets. That way, there's no question about it.
Good, good idea.
Good, good idea.
Because five years from now, someone looks at that, they might not.
Right.
Also, number 6, to enable each student so far as possible to attend the school near its home, isn't that similar to number 1 in terms of the neighborhood school? I think one or the other. You know, I like the neighborhood concept, which includes the fact that the student should be closest to their home.
It does, it does.
I would think, you know, that might be something to consider as well.
It is, I think the one thing that happened is, when we, when we looked at that, that was on some of the initial conversations in the early task force looking at this, what would happen is you'd have a school that might be geographically close, but the neighborhood went back into it, and so actually, bus service went out towards the other school from the neighborhood. So that's where it complicated that. And the, the point with D made earlier was with the order, that was another thing that the task force looked at earlier and said, you know, if there, if there really isn't a priority, because numbering sometimes implies priority, then maybe it should be bulleted as well, so.
I don't think any of these guidelines are going to explain the location of South Middle School, do you?
No.
I don't think we should put something in here that we're not planning on doing. And number 8 says to coordinate attendance areas of elementary and secondary schools. And we still have that problem going on between West and Central, and nobody ever brings it up, except for those poor parents of the kids who are in the 10% that have to go to the other school. And if, if we put it in here, then I think we need to address it.
It's, as Paul mentioned earlier, some of them conflict with the other ones, and so, yet they, if they're going to coordinate attendance areas moving through, it might not be their neighborhood school or the closest school. And so that was part of, I mean, that was part of our discussion and dialogue. So, we kind of realized that, you know, when you do one, sometimes you're conflicting, directly conflicting or doing the opposite of another. But that, that actually has been part of the conversations. It has come up a couple of times in, when we were doing the needs assessment phase of Project Parkway, that was part of a conversation that come, coming up as we reviewed these guidelines.
And you know, one thing that occurred to me, that we haven't done a survey of those families to really get a sense for the degree to which the problem exists, and I think that would be very helpful for the committee and you all to know.
I don't really know the history of it, I don't know how it came to be.
I think the man sitting next to you could probably shut the door.
Sam wrote these.
It was around preferences. A lot of it was preference, you know, basically, and no one wanted to make that decision to move one way or the other. I know at West, we talked about it an awful lot in terms of Highcroft going to both West Middle and Central Middle, and people were happy with the decision as it is at that time. Those going to Central loved it, and those who went to West loved it, and we worked hard between the two schools to make sure that the students were comfortable and welcomed, and the families were as well. And it worked.
Well, I know, I was invited a while back to speak to the Highcroft PTO, and this was clearly on their radar screen, and at least those in the room, 30 or so, their communication to me was, we like it the way it is.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we should change it, but what I'm saying is, if we're going to put it down as a guideline, then we have to really do it. And I don't think we're really doing that in this particular case.
But I think, in a sense though, having it there means that we would not want to dismantle other situations and create situations where schools are divided elsewhere. You know, that's how I look at it, is the reason for being there possibly, that we don't want to tamper other schools, elementary attendance areas, splitting between two middle schools and two high schools.
Sam and I can remember when Northeast, then it was called East Middle School, went to all four high schools.
All four high schools, yeah.
But I also think that we shouldn't tie our hands. If that's something that we think we're going to need to do, then we need to find a way to word it so that it's talking about what we're going to do in the future. But I don't really like the way it's worded here.
We'll look at it.
Anything else?
Yeah, there's a fellow, there's a fellow out there that might have something.
Fairly recent experience with the.
All right, then, if I'm hearing correctly, then we'll go ahead and move 14.01 to the consent agenda, and 14.02 will keep where it is so we can review it again next month.
Really, you'll review it again, but all you really approve is the policy, and you haven't said anything about the policy. You think the policy's okay? So you'd like to see the guidelines, but it's not something you really have to vote on. You vote, isn't that right? You vote on the policy but not the guidelines?
So, just to summarize, we will change the numbers to bullets. We will look at a reword for number 5 and possibly 8, and look at the redundancy in numbers 1 and 6 to see if they couldn't be combined and one eliminated maybe.
These policies will be moved to the consent agenda for our next meeting. Thank you. 15.O., call for a special meeting, none. 16.O., call for an executive session, May 4th, 2011. I would ask for a motion and a second that the Board of Education call for executive sessions on Wednesday, May 14th, 2011, at 6:30 PM, and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School for the purpose of considering, 1, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, 610.021.1. 2, hiring, firing, disciplining, and promoting of particular employees by the district when personnel information about the employees discussed or recorded, 610.021.3. And 3, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, 610.021.13. Roll call, Ms. Kalanda?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Yeah.
We have a motion, and we have a second?
I have a question. I think I misheard you. I thought you said May 16th, and it's May 4th, is that correct?
It is May 4th.
Oh, you said May 14th, I misheard the wrong thing.
I'm sorry.
So it's May 4th.
I don't know where I got May 16th, but it is May 4th, both times.
So I misheard the wrong thing.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, Ms. Kalanda?
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Philpman?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Smogerman?
Yes.
Dr. Seertino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. Number 19.0, I'd like a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting. All in favor?
You need a motion?
No.
You need a second?
I'm sorry. I'm getting there. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7.O. At this time, we'll adjourn to a closed session, and we thank everyone for their attendance and their patience.